Our loving and kind Father in Heaven, we bow our heads before thee as councilors to the town of Cardston. We ask thy spiritual lead and direct us and that we'll be receptive to the promptings that we need to directly lead the affairs of this town. We are honored that we've had the privilege by the citizens to act in their name and we ask that I will do so in a pleasing manner that we'll take care of the matters that are at hand. We ask for guiding influence upon our community, Father in Heaven, and protect our community as you've done before. We ask that the citizens will be smart, that they'll wash their hands, keep safe, and that this COVID-19 disease will be very, very low impact on our community and surrounding area. We ask for blessing to be with those who have a reason to mourn, that they will be comforted. These things we ask for and we pray for humbly in the name of thy sacred son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We will start the meeting. We're a couple more minutes early, but it'll be all right. So, welcome to the CCW held on the fifth day of May 2020. I hope you're all doing well. You all look fairly healthy through the screen at least. Now, thank you, Counselor Ben-Grey, for the opening prayer. We will call this order, this meeting to order. Are there any additions or adoptions to the agenda that we should be aware of? Seeing nobody waving their hands.
I got a question.
Yes.
Got a question for Jeff. Are we going to be talking about people in green spaces and et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, we will be.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Thank you.
That's on there. Okay. If there's no other additions, I will take a motion to adopt this agenda. I just saw Counselor Brown's fingers waving there, so we'll go with Counselor Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. Any opposed? Seeing nothing, I will move on. We have no delegations. The minutes of April 7th, 2020, I've read through them. I didn't see anything that's out of the ordinary, so if we could have somebody adopt those minutes for us. Counselor Ben-Grey, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Let's get right into things then. A bylaw policy, A, Bylaw 1689, borrowing bylaw outfall line. There's been some I'll just ignore that little number there for a second. There's been some changes. Did you want to talk about it now, Jeff, or?
You bet.
Yeah, and we're not gonna like the changes, but we're gonna have many.
Um, thank you, Counselor. What I wanted to talk about, hold on, my this thing's falling off. Let me clip in here. Okay. What I wanted to talk about was, we passed first reading on the borrowing bylaw last week for $450,000. The engineer and the installer have recommended some changes which have bumped the price considerably. Now, there, I had a good talk, I had a good talk with Benson Porter. I understand the reason for the changes and it's a bit of a there's five or six things that have added up to more money, so I want to go through them. But I want to walk a fine line here. I don't necessarily want to get too much into the exact dollars of everything because I don't know where this is going, but I think we're pretty safe to walk through this. So, our borrowing bylaw was for $450,000. But I also mentioned that I did not have the final quotes from Porter Tanner at that time. I just wasn't expecting them to come back as high as they did. So what we have now is the total quote for the project is about $610,000. So it's $160,000. Now, I want to talk about the why, that is. And one thing from the first quote to the second was that engineers are recommending, they were able to source a pipe which is called Schedule 11 versus Schedule 17. Effectively, it's just a much thicker pipe. Benson was telling me that it would be almost two inches thick on the wall, the pipe wall, and has incredible pressure resistance. The second thing the engineers are recommending is that instead of just putting the pipe in the ground, in the clay, that it's all bedded in gravel all the way up the pipe, because then it compacts as it moves. So as the pipe might jiggle or move, the gravel will continue to compact. And then they're also recommending that there's fabric put around all of the gravel in any of the roadways. They're recommending the addition of one new air relief valve, and they are recommending that any of the manholes are waterproofed. So, the short story there is that that takes the project up to almost $610,000 from 450. My discussion with Benson, what, yesterday, and we spoke quite at length was, is there any wisdom in the town putting this out to bid, which is a difficult question to ask a contractor looking for the job, right? But my concern was, was this, were the prices we were being quoted market value prices? And his assertion to me is that they are not. In fact, he would assert that there's no margin for him on any of the parts or products. So the pipe, air valves, gravel, there isn't any margin for him, and that his margin on the excavation and the time is below market value. So they are still participating as a partner to get this remediated. And the, and, and I don't, I haven't had a chance to talk to StanTech, but the fact is they're specking this as robust as possible. That the bedding, the pipe, the fabric, the whole process. What happens for Porter Tanner is when you now have to bed gravel and you have to put fabric behind it and you have to do all this, the time just goes, it just takes that much more time. So Benson anticipates this will take them a full month to do now.
How many?
A month, 30 days. And so, the time and the materials, so you know, it was $50,000 here and $10,000 here and 14 here and 28 here and and we're at the number we're at. So, before we proceed with reading of this or preparing for it, I wanted some feedback from you as councilors and two things to keep in mind. One is, that 160,000 is essentially, yeah, 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 that's right. It's essentially one more year. I had in my head when I talked to you, Counselor Silk, earlier, it was two, but I'm mistaken. It's one more year of payment above and beyond what we had initially thought. So it's another year's payment. And you also reserved a considerable amount of public works utility capital money this year that we could apply to it if we wanted to keep that, the time of the payment down. If we wanted to reduce the time, if we wanted to put any cash down. So, Counselor Barnes is wondering what you're up to.
I'm sorry, I'm shutting my other computer off. I got two computers in my face.
Oh, it's all good.
Bug in me.
So that's, that's what I wanted to present to you. We have advertised for the public hearing on the 12th of May. Obviously, it matters at the public hearing if the price is substantially different, and it should matter. And we would tweak some advertising accordingly. So I would like some feedback from you on your thoughts on how we should potentially proceed with this.
Counselor Ben-Grey.
If you recall last month, Jeff, I asked about, about this pipe and whether that we're using a very much heavier wall pipe. It also pleases me that we're using the same contractor as Porter Tanner, because the amount of pipe that they put in the ground is unbelievable, and I think that they have the knowledge to do us a good job. But I want to ask, because of the thick wall pipe that we're using, how about flexibility? You know, you talk about putting it in gravel bed where it compact itself. Is there a certain amount of flexibility in that so that when it does compact, it's not gonna crack?
Yeah, so that was the intention, if I might, Counselor Court. That was the intention of going to the HDPE pipe and not going with PEX pipe. So PEX pipe is a PVC product, very rigid, and the concern was that the pressure and the vacuum on this pipe over time is what was breaking the PVC. So this is a poly pipe, and it has inherent elasticity or flexibility, might be the better word.
Now, you say they're putting one more air, air intake in it, or air breather, whatever.
Excuse me?
Yeah, they would like to put in an additional above. I think there's four already in the pipe and they're suggesting we put an additional air relief valve. You'd be shocked to know what that costs. You'd add an air relief valve, by the way, but.
Well, I don't think I would, but at the same token, that would, that would release the air between, between valves so that we wouldn't have a pressure buildup as our hydraulic buildup lockup as a pump kicks in and out, right?
Well, that's the theory, yes, is that we hopefully don't create any vacuums between air valves.
Good. Thank you.
Counselor Silk and then the mayor.
So, I think, in thinking about this myself, I would recommend that we just take what we have owed on the outfall line out of reserves, pay it off, and then move forward with borrowing what we need to, to finish the upgrade on the outfall line and be done with it. It's already built into our utility anyway.
So you're saying take this extra, whatever we're paying, just pay it out outright, not add an extra year?
Yeah, what we owe on the sewer outfall line already, take that one out of reserves, pay it off, and then just build in this amount that we have on the repairs to it going forward, like we had planned anyway. I mean, it's built into the utility.
Okay. Mayor?
All right. That's to carry on with Counselor Silk's proposal. Jeff, we have how much more in the debenture to pay for the outfall at this point? Is that $50,000 or what is it that's left?
There's two payments, Mayor, I believe, roughly about $168,000 apiece, so $336,000.
Okay, so, yeah, so I was not too far from the amount.
Close to $2 million.
So we have in reserve for those type of things, we have about what, $350,000 in reserve at this time?
Well, you have 1.2 million in major utility capital, but this year at 2019, we put another $315,000 into major utility capital in 2019.
Okay, so we're a little short, Counselor Silk, from the $335,000 in the payment, right? We're about $20,000 short that we could take from the other reserve. And then, what you propose then is to have one loan that would be then the 610,000. Am I correct?
You're right.
Okay, so from an interest, from interest perspective on the amount, is that beneficial to do it this way, Jeff?
The only wild card, and we can find this out quite readily, the only wild card is what the penalty for paying out the existing loan might be. It's only two years, right? So it's not much. That may, we just have to examine that. Now, Counselor Silk, if I might, let me bounce this off of you. If we were to take that same amount of cash and simply pay for this, this phase of it, the repair, and only finance the difference, we kind of net out the same as far as the amount of time we're paying the loan. If we had to, if it resulted in the same end, would that also be acceptable to you?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, that might be the better way to, to do it, that we just added a year on to, we add a year and a bit on to the current loan and then just pay cash for the rest, potentially.
Right.
Okay, we can look at both scenarios, if that's the collective thought of council there.
We won't be voting on this till next week, but I guess you could get a little more.
So.
So Jeff, the example that you just gave, that would probably save us some money in penalties, correct?
Correct, but what I don't know, Counselor, is I have no clue how much they charge us on just two years remaining. It could be nominal. It might be, but I don't know yet. Okay, thanks.
So, Counselor Brown and then Counselor Barnes. Counselor Brown, nothing? Counselor Barnes?
Um, so, are you saying that there is a penalty if we paid out that loan early?
Correct.
Very often, it's the case.
That's interesting. I did, I always thought you could pay out loans early on something like this.
No, and even a conventional mortgage, you have a penalty to pay it out early.
Well, that'll, no, not necessarily. There's, there's open mortgages too, but.
Yeah, this, this isn't, yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor Ben-Grey, you have something else?
So, so if, what would be the penalty if we paid, did you discuss that? I, I'm sorry, somebody came to my door and I thought it was my wife trying to get in, banging on the door.
We're not sure what the penalty is right now. We don't know what the penalty is right now for paying it out. You'd have to look that up.
Yeah.
We'd have to talk about the first choice. Counselor Ben-Grey.
Uh, Jeff, as I look at the bylaw in place right now, we can't do a second reading on this bylaw presently. It's all the figures the way they are, right?
No, no, you couldn't do it tonight anyway, and we'd need to bring this all to you next meeting with the numbers sorted out.
All right, thank you.
So why don't we do that with the numbers sorted out next week? Counselor Silk, you have something?
Yeah, I'm assuming there would also be a reduced interest rate if we were borrowing, right, Jeff? That needs to be factored into this equation.
Explain that again, Counselor, reduced interest rate compared to what?
Compared to what we have been paying on this thing.
So that's what we need to look at, is if we just simply pay the penalty and pay out the current mortgage and then refinance the whole thing under a new mortgage, potentially the interest rate over time is, is better, and we can offset a lot of the penalty. Yeah, potentially, potentially that could be the case.
So, you'll crunch the numbers then?
We will.
Okay. Not what we wanted to hear, but I think it's a handle. Any other comments?
I hate interest and I hate increased costs.
Well, we all do.
I know.
Jeff. Just for interest sake, right now on Alberta Capital Finance, the interest rate for a five-year mortgage is 1.145%. So if we can maybe, it might make sense for us to buy out that other one if, and pay the penalty and remortgage a new four and a half or five years or something. Okay, so we'll, we'll explore that.
So a question.
Yes.
Were we going to re-borrow the money from credit union? On this?
So, how we had structured it.
Was that a choice?
How we had structured it was that Alberta Capital Finance Corporation, who holds the mortgage on the initial build, is not accepting new loans right now until the fall. They only do two intakes a year. And so we had structured a line of credit with a credit union that would fund it for now, and then when we could refinance with Alberta Capital Finance, they would buy out the line of credit.
Okay. So be no penalty on that, though.
Lines of credit won't have, it wouldn't have a penalty to buy it out at any time, so there was no risk there.
Anything else on this? We will see much more next week on the, on the figures and the costs and everything else. If there's nothing else, let's move on to the mill rate bylaw, bylaw 1690, or any second thoughts? We discussed it last week. Any second, any other questions on this one? Of course, we cannot make any motions this week.
Yeah, Counselor, I put it on the agenda just if, to make sure no one's had a sober second thought or cold feet about any of the rates, and then if not, we'll get the bylaw completely prepared and ready for, for passing.
I think, given the situation, we've done very well at this mill weight, mill rate.
One, one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Ben-Grey.
Jeff, we have not had any increased requisitions to this date that could hamper our mill rate?
Uh, no, not from a requisition point of view. We're still, if you, if you, if you ask me if I've nailed down all the implications of COVID on recreation yet, the answer's still a firm no. But from a recreation, or sorry, requisition point of view, no, those are all set. It seems fine.
Good, thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else on that, let's look at the budget. Any second thoughts on the budget in 2020? Had a chance again to look at that again last week.
Well, I really honestly believe that we need to give it a little bit more time so that once we understand what is open and what is open now and what is open later, will have an effect on the revenues and on the expenses, and Jeff cannot have a crystal ball at this time. So we'll have to be patient and wait. I don't think that Jeff can plug in the figures perfectly at this point.
No, it's a very unique year that we're, with the mill rate and with the budget, because everything's up in the air, Jeff.
Just remember, Mayor, that we do need to pass this next week, and so we're gonna get it as close as we can.
We will pass it the way it is, hoping for the best.
Yeah, okay.
We address when we need to.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll go to other business. Emergency Advisory Committee items. I don't, rest you, I had my phone ringing off the hook most of the weekend. Most of them are golfers. Whatever, and then today, Jeff, you clarified that pretty good, and I were, they're a little bit happier with that. There was just some miscommunication, that was all. So.
Let me give you a little bit of something regarding the miscommunication.
I don't think it's miscommunication, misunderstanding more.
Okay, agreed.
I mean, everybody interprets things according to their own background knowledge, right?
Do, yep.
So maybe, Counselor, just quick on the golf course, and, and we can talk about that if you'd like. So on Friday, the province announced that golf courses could open on Saturday. That was a surprise to everyone in the whole industry. In fact, The Herald did a great article yesterday about how the golf courses had no idea they were gonna open that. But the interesting thing on Friday is we were given none of the conditions under which we could open. So we were told we could, but with no direction. So that came in, we got that Monday. And then we got more today at noon. The golf committee meeting, the golf committee, sorry, is meeting tomorrow. And then the weather doesn't look really great through Friday, but if it doesn't get too wet, and that's our biggest issue down there now, is everything's still really bad, then we would like to open Thursday or Friday. That would be the goal. So we have staff coming in tomorrow to get things set up as much as we can. Again, we can't use the clubhouse, we can't sell any sundries, we can't sell any inventory. So we're just trying to adjust to how that's gonna work. And there's gonna, this is going to be one of the side effects of having a municipally-owned course, is that you're gonna get a lot of phone calls this year, particularly from the old boys that don't understand why they have to book a tee time. They don't understand why they can't this or why they can't that. But there's a ton of control around how we're gonna open this course this year. And it's going to frustrate some of our golfers where they can't ride a cart together, for example. That's one of the pieces. They can't take the pins out of the greens, so the pin has to stay in the green, for example. And all that stuff we're working through right now to try and get it figured out. So Anthony is gonna bounce most of his ideas and thoughts off of the golf committee tomorrow, and then we're hoping we're rolling. But the other thing to keep in mind, because I was getting inundated Thursday night and Friday with phone calls, was, we don't have the same climate as McGrath and Lethbridge. So we are one week to the day of the last snow melting off the golf course. We're only one week removed, and they've been pumping water off the course ever since then to try and get the water table down. So Miles is comfortable that we can probably get going, but it wasn't just something that we were ready to go on Saturday to the dismay of a few golfers.
Okay.
Too bad.
The phone calls I got, I tried to explain to them, why didn't we get it earlier and get it fixed, blah, 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 but you're right, there was snow on it till a week ago. So it's easy just to jump on it. Counselor Brown?
I think.
Can I make your, Counselor Brown speak? I have a comment after, Counselor Brown.
All right.
Are we good?
Yep.
So, I think part of the miscommunication, the angry phone calls I got was just miscommunication, and they thought council and the mayor were shutting down the golf course because of COVID, just because of how it was said when she gave her dialogue. But I think we've all calmed that down. I think the key is just, once the golf course advisory committee meets and Anthony and all of them come up with the protocol, it's just a matter of emailing out the existing golfers, and they're, they're gonna be giddy just to be out on the course. Like, I, the people that have been calling me angry, once we, you know, give them an Ativan, I feel like they're just, they're okay. They understand that, I mean, everyone needs an Ativan this year, right? It is the Ativan year. Everyone just needs to put a pin in it and just realize that our goal is, we're gonna get you in the pool as quick as we can, but governing.
Maybe, maybe Jeff Bart put it in the water.
Anyway, I think the moral of the story is just to keep on doing what we're doing and, and educating the people, and they will be, you're gonna have cranky, but you can't cure that, so, you know.
Again, I don't think there was so much of miscommunication, misunderstanding. We're pretty much following the province's guidelines.
Absolutely.
And they didn't quite understand that. Counselor Barnes, you had something?
Yeah. Um, so after we had our meeting and talking about it, I was pretty shocked that we were opening too, but, and I've had some of those angry emails I've been getting and phone calls. So, I want to get a little bit of clarification. Not just for the golfers, but for those who like to go to walk around the golf course at nighttime after the golfing is done for the day. There are people that like to go out with their, you know, they have their headlamps. Looking for golf balls. They just go for a walk. And I don't know that they're checking for golf balls, probably are, but this one fellow said, he, over the years, he's gone out there numerous times, and Jeff, you probably know who it is. And he has seen people out there, and he's been, he feels like they're kind of like a security sort of thing. People know that there's somebody out there, and so they're not as apt to, you know, to do damage. He said he's seen people out there with horses, he's seen people, or ATVs. Hold on the thing, you know, and I'm thinking, well, I don't know whether he reported that to you, Jeff, or not, but those are the kind of things that, I mean, we can't have a, we can't have a bylaw officer down there the whole time, but people like this gentleman, if they can walk in the morning, early in the morning, or late at night, that might not be a bad idea. They're not, certainly not hurting anything.
I've been down there lots the last couple weeks. I rode my bike down on the, on the nature trail down there. And I even saw her former CIO and her boyfriend walking around down on the golf course. I think technically they're not supposed to be on the course, but people are definitely using that road and, and the walking trail a lot since the weather's warmed up. And yes, there have been a few people on the golf course. And yes, they haven't been doing anything wrong that I could see anyhow, but we need to be a little bit careful just to throw it wide open too, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, Counselor Court, I would agree with you. Technically, the course is closed. We've had some people out there who are running, and the problem we have this time of year is we've applied fungicide, herbicide, pesticide, mold agents, all kinds of things, and then people let their dogs run through it, and then they're mad that their dog might get sick.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, stay off the golf course. It's, we're unique in Cardston, and it's not unique to us, but it's pretty unusual in many areas that you just go take a walk on the golf course.
Well, I have a question about that. Comment. These people that are walking, their, their bugbear is that we help pay for that. It's our, it's a municipal golf course that was paid with our taxes.
And they paid for the, the swimming pool too.
And I have to agree that it was that, and so if they're not doing any harm, I don't have a problem with it, but that's, I'm only one of seven of you guys. I'm just saying that, yeah, I understand they helped pay it. I helped pay it. Each of us helped to buy that course over time, and we're still paying.
Same little problem. Most people will be very respectful of it.
Yes.
And some won't. So where do you draw the line? Jeff, you had a comment?
Well, I, I think you were talking to a Counselor Court, so the taxpayers paid for all of our infrastructure, but they don't get to just wander aimlessly through the sewer plant or the swimming pool or the ice rink or anything else, right? There's controls.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown?
Jeff summed it up. That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Anything else on the golf course? I'm going to that meeting tomorrow, so it'll be interesting. They're all excited to get flying on it. Other things we need to look at, the emergency advisory committee items that I think the mayor and Counselor Barnes should address. The summer events, ball fields and tennis court. You see, there was a letter on the tennis court in there and the thoughts of the the GHS, and garage sales. Again, there's a letter on garage sales. So, Counselor Barnes or the mayor, would you like to speak to that?
Well, regarding all those events, the summer events, we have decided that you, you as a council will need to, to decide if that's okay. But that the event in July, we, we, we need to forego them. We have not decided on the August events yet. So, we should talk about that first. The July events, from all what we can see through the province, all those events are canceled. And I think it would be only right for our protection to cancel those two.
Okay, what, okay, what about Little Eggs? Okay. What about Little League, Ben's League, Women's League softball? Are we canceling all of that? Or are we going to work around that? I understand July 1st needs to be canceled. What about the other stuff?
It's very difficult to try to have all those Little League people not have such close contact. I don't know how you really manage that. Unless you have an answer and you can tell me how safe that can be. And if it is truly safe and we don't have any sickness on our back because of our decision. If you can tell me how close to foolproof we can be, I don't know that we can be.
Little League Canada is monitoring this. They've delayed till June the 4th to see what things, how things are happening. I've had softball, but people talked to me, they said, fine, we'll play seven on seven. Then you don't have 15 people there and you can keep your distance. Those things to me would be, I think they'd be all right. I don't know if you want, if we don't think it's all right, are we going to send the bylaw guy after him? I mean, there's, the people are going to be on those, they're already on the diamonds. Every time I go by, there's somebody out there informally. Maybe formally we can tell them. I think it'd be very difficult to police informally to.
The difficulty is, any surface that they come in contact with, unless it's disinfected, how can you be sure?
Well, they wouldn't.
No contamination.
They just wouldn't use the dugouts. Counselor Banger, and then Counselor Barnes.
I've been following Calgary really close. And Mayor Menchey basically hit it on the head when he says, we need to protect our young people. And he says, how do we know what they're touching isn't infected? And how do you stop them from touching it? And if you go around our ball diamonds and, and Counselor Brown will, will agree with me. If you go around our ball diamonds when we're having a Little League baseball game or something like that, or softball game, you got all of the parents supporting their kids and they're all using the same bat. And they're all using the same, sometimes there's two or three kids that are sharing the ball glove. And moms and dads are sitting there and they're talking about and bragging about their children. How do you stop that intervention and that touch and go stuff?
As I said before, Little League Canada, who is the governing body of Little League, obviously, they're holding off till June 4th and see what else, how things develop. So maybe we should think about that as well. I don't have a problem again with informal ball players. They're adults. They do, they're going to do what they do if they touch it, they touch it. But how do we keep them off? I mean, that's my thought anyhow. Counselor Brown?
I think it's reasonable to, I think, I hear what's being said. I hear what the mayor's saying. I hear what Counselor Court is saying. I, I'm all about recreation. I understand how our community needs to be outside. I understand that because it's hard being contained. But I really feel like the Little League governing body is able to make that call. And I feel like there's nothing wrong with this council us saying, you know, we're going to take this one month at a time. I mean, we didn't know what, that the golf course was going to be opened overnight. There's nothing wrong with, like for Swim Club, I'm canceled. I chose to just cancel it rather than go month to month. Well, is it going to be this month? Is it going to be that month? Like, I don't know. But if Little League chooses to wait to hear from their governing board, is it not, is it not reasonable to say if the governing board says it's okay and the province says it's okay? I don't know. Just my thoughts.
Well, I agree. We don't need to jump the ship and plan four months down the road. We really don't know what's going to be happening four months down the road. The mayor, the perhaps large events like the party in the park and that, they need to go. And maybe even our parade in August will probably need to go. Family ball tournament, I guess we need to see, because a lot of people come home just for that. But those are things we can decide on down the road, I think, as a council. Don't think we need to decide today on that. Any other thoughts? Counselor Barnes?
So as we talked at our meeting, we had decided that we were going to wait till July 1st before we made any, we suggested that we were going to bring it to council, that we would wait till June 1st, I should say, to make any major decisions about July and August. Yeah. Because we don't know yet. And also brought up in that meeting is we just that of COVID. We're, we're kind of behind everybody else. And so we're kind of just getting started in our thing. So I think it's important that we're careful. I don't, isn't that what we discussed, Mayor? We just needed to be careful. And because if we, if we move too quickly and we get more cases, then, you know, we're going to, people are going to then start coming, well, you shouldn't have done that, you know? There's going to be people on both sides, right? And so we just have to be careful, I think. I don't think, I'd like to make a decision on Little League, especially when their organization is saying, we'll wait for June. I think we should do the same.
I think Counselor Drew wants to talk.
Oh, no, that's fine. I just, my, my thought is that we need to look to the medical professionals in our province and our government. And when they start saying things like, you can open this and you can open that, I think that's where, where we should be going. And right now, if that means that we have to say July the 1st is done, we'll wait and see about Heritage Days or whatever. In the next four or five weeks, we're going to get a lot more information from our medical professionals who know COVID better than we do and, and know, know where the curve is and how flattened it is and how many cases we're having and that kind of stuff. So I'm, I'm comfortable doing that. That's just how I feel.
Dr. Henshaw has already mentioned two weeks ago that caused all the kerfuffle, that all large events are canceled, Calgary Stampede. I can't see how we can hold a parade or a rodeo in August with those kind of, unless, unless the government changes their tune. So I agree. We listen to see what they have to say about it as, as time goes on. Mayor?
Okay. I really believe that until the government, for the large parade or the large event, until the government tells you that you can have more than 250 people in one event, then until that time, we should not have the event.
I agree. Yeah.
And regarding, regarding the other, the Little League, I am with you, Counselor Drew. We need to use the best advice that is given to us and not put ourselves as being the one with the knowledge. Because honestly, we don't.
It's going to be interesting when the CFL wants to open up what the government has to say about that.
We don't have to worry about that one.
Jeff, I'm just going to back up just a little bit. Tell me about, tell me about the campground, Jeff. What's happening there? We can't, we can't open the, we can't open the washrooms or the laundry, but we can still have campers, right?
So you could open the campground right now and allow people to come and camp under certain conditions. But last week we talked about holding off until June 1st. I'm going to have the operators come to one of our next meetings and discuss with us. We have, I think, three trailers down there now who are utility workers, gas line workers. And so the province and the feds under the staged opening are waiting until June 1st before anything opens. And it will only be at this point for interprovincial campers. Sorry. Yes, only for those from Alberta. They won't take any reservations for people outside of province. So right now, our campground operators have agreed to wait until June 1st is the earliest opening date. So we'll have more discussion on the campground over the next month.
Okay. Thank you. Court, what are we thinking on the tennis courts? Leave it, leave it closed?
Well, so I've been getting some feedback on that. People saying, you know, why can't we go in there? We can go as our family. We don't have to let people run around in there. And it becomes a policing piece for us. How do we monitor it? I probably got Counselor Selk wanting to play pickleball in the worst way and he can't go in there. And so the question is, AHS, a few weeks ago, almost a month ago, said, we want all that stuff closed. Anything that's a structure in a playground, close it. So we did. They were talking picnic tables, benches, anything you could touch. And now, you know, you saw the email from Robert. He's the public health officer saying, I wouldn't do it. But there isn't a hard, fast rule. They do want the municipal authority to make a ruling on some of this. So that's why I put it to you.
The garage fields fall in the same category then?
Yep, that's municipal authority essentially can rule on that.
We'll take views on this, Mayor.
All right. So here's a little bit of the problem. Here, if we were to find a system, there would be an honest system with people signing, telling us that they're using the cord and they have disinfected the gate, the front gate, all the locks. I would imagine you could do it, but here it's a problem. That will have to happen probably in the evening. Who gives the key to the next person? And who looks after that? Jeff can maybe talk to about that, that aspect of the idea.
It generally has not been locked up. Is that correct, Jeff?
Correct.
Yeah, so.
So what happened, Jeff, then in that case?
Well, I'm not completely sure, Mayor. I mean.
The problem is disinfection. If it's not happening, it's a dangerous proposition to have it open.
I think Counselor Selk had something too, Counselor Court.
Counselor Selk?
I think, just like I get the calls from the pickleballers and let's just say from their perspective, they're like, the game is social distanced. And if you're talking about using the same ball, well, use a glove on your free hand. That the ball you're using, you know, you only pick it up with that hand and, you know. So the list goes on and on. And it's kind of like, I have to agree with him. I think that you could probably do something like pickleball and do it safely enough that you wouldn't be subjecting anyone to COVID.
Yeah, I don't think social distance is a problem. Even with the tennis, I don't see enough people down there that are bumping into each other. But it's maybe, it's the gate, as the mayor was saying, it's touching surfaces like the gate and that we need to be concerned with, but. Any other comments on it?
Yeah.
Brown and then Counselor Drew.
How do we, I understand what Counselor Selk is saying. But I guess my question is, how do we, how do we allow people in the tennis courts to play whatever it is they're going to play, but we don't allow them in the playgrounds? In the, like, like it's just, it's a fine, it's a fine line. I'm, I'm all for getting out there and doing things, but I'm smarter. I mean, I wear a mask and gloves for a living, right? Like, I'm aware of what I'm touching and, and so it's, it's, I just, I wonder, that's a really fine line. So I'm not quite sure how we can open one and not have the playgrounds that open too. I'm a full supporter of, of, I mean, we've been given phases, you know, phase one, phase two, phase three from the government to go ahead and, and follow and, and open up at certain times. Yeah. It's tricky.
Want to respond to that, Counselor Selk? Then we'll go to Counselor Drew.
Well, I know you can't regulate who plays in there, but in theory, you, you know, if someone's playing pickleball, it's for adults. And at the end of the day, it's the same with the ball diamonds. You can't regulate who's playing on the ball diamonds because they're using them anyway.
And they are adults.
And they are adults. So they take risks. You want to play pickleball, you know what the risk is. So either take the necessary precautions or don't go there.
Counselor Drew?
My thoughts were along the same lines as Counselor Brown, so I won't belabor that.
Okay. And I kind of think the same way as Counselor Selk. So, Mayor?
Especially, I really think in a time where there are active cases around our town, you have to become careful of what's happening and not let your guard down too soon. I am all for having playgrounds open and all that stuff open. But why, why create risk when we don't need to?
Well, you're suggesting we lock the tennis courts up?
I'm just saying, we're not there to put a ruling saying that we open it.
So you're going to put a dome over the ball diamonds? So nobody uses those either?
No, people have to use their best judgment, obviously.
Arrest the case.
But you can rest your case, but don't invite them to do what they shouldn't do.
Okay. So what you're saying is informally, they use them, but they're not using them with the blessing of the town. Yeah.
Do you want to be responsible for sickness?
No, I don't. And that's why I think the best thing to do is, if they're adults, they're going to use it, but the town doesn't want them to. And I don't think we need an RCMP officer rounding them up if they are using it. Counselor Banger and Counselor Barnes, Mayor Brown, sorry.
Counselor, we want to remember one thing here. Our mayor has taken a real kicking over this. She's the one that, the spokesperson for the town. And whatever we do, she's asking for her, for us, basically in support of what she's going to tell the public. So we may, we better make a decision right now on how we are going to support our mayor and what she decides is best for this community. So are we going to open up the playgrounds? Are we going to open up the tennis courts? Are we going to say, Mayor, this is yours, this is our stand and we support you on it?
Well, I would suggest that it's the seven people making that decision, not just the mayor.
I agree. I agree with you.
That's what I'm suggesting is we, we, right now, make that decision.
Okay, Counselor Brown, Counselor Brown. Too many B, Brown, Barnes, Banger. Counselor Barnes, Brown. Counselor Brown.
Go Barnes.
One of you two jump in. Counselor, Counselor Barnes, go ahead. I keep saying your name, so.
Okay. Counselor Brown brought up the idea about phased in things. I, I, I feel, I'm concerned about the playground equipment. Like I said, we're behind the rest of the province with our cases just getting going. But I like what we talked about in our meeting the other, the other day, advisory meeting. That people who are going to use, or use the tennis courts need to come and sign in. Maybe we need to have a jar with disinfectant to throw the key in and have a, something to pick it up with and clean it off. And, and if that's a big concern, but I, I think that, that I don't have near the concern with the pickleball or the tennis court as I do with the campground or the playground with little kids.
Yeah. And again, I, I'm.
Oh, little kids will. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Everything is so, the computers are really acting up here.
Yeah, you're kind of bouncing in and out. Counselor Brown?
So not to play devil's advocate, but, so the question is, and Mayor, this actually goes to you. So, so what happens if, if comes September, October, November, we still have COVID cases in our community? Do we keep, do we keep shutting, like, do we? It's just, I understand, I understand where the government is saying, we can't do this, we can't do that. We've got lots of people at work. We've got lots of people that are really struggling in other areas of their life because of COVID-19 or COVID-17. I understand that. I just wonder, as a council, how long we will continue to shut this town down? It like, it's just, it's, it's a fine line.
Well, if a man to do that, it's a concern of mine, for sure. It's a concern of all of us. But I also believe that what Counselor Drew said is very reasonable. We are not the experts here. We have the medical profession that is around us, that is monitoring what's happening around us and in any other town. And I really believe that there is some town that probably will reopen all their playground and all that quicker than others. The thing is, why don't we use the wisdom that is given to us through those people who are knowledgeable? The government only is only as knowledgeable as what the Alberta Health Services is giving them. They take risks. We could take the same amount of risk and ignore all those those good advice that is given to us, but at what cost? So I really think that maybe what we, as you were talking.
We've lost you.
I think we all just lost her volume, didn't we?
Yeah, I think so.
Um, Jill, can you pop over there?
Is there still only five cases in the area?
Uh, yes, there is.
Growing in the last three or four days then.
Yeah, um, one thing on this I want to just point out, I, I, I got this this morning. Um, no, I got it yesterday afternoon, actually. Um, and this is something from AHS on playgrounds. And, and I wasn't sure we were gonna go into playground structures today, but here's what playgrounds are saying. They're saying on playgrounds, regarding playgrounds and playground equipment, at this time, the recommendation is to keep the area closed unless the owner can assure structures can be disinfected on a regular basis. Physical distancing can be maintained between users and maximum fifteen people attend the playground at one time. When asked for clarification on a regular basis, we were told it would be suggested that it is disinfected every three hours. So I just want to be cautious here that you, you do have some discretion over some of these things, but some of the things you don't. So pools, for example, choice, that's phase three, that's it. You don't get to choose to go early. But tennis courts, your call. Playgrounds, if you can do certain things. Um, so that there is, it's not the same for everything.
Okay, I would suggest because we haven't had any more active cases the last several days, so we you read this again another week or so. And if there's no active cases here, then maybe, maybe you could open things up a little bit. Because I'm, I'm guessing they're tracking the five people that have got COVID. And there hasn't been any new cases for a while. So can we put this to rest? I, I, I don't believe there should be garage sales personally. That's just too much hands on. But the other ones, I think we could just let it go as a status quo until at least the next week. See how this virus develops within the community, within the Bud Reserve and Carson, Carson County. Any thoughts on that?
I agree.
Yeah, put this to bed for a week.
Yeah, me. Okay, I think a week is a, is a good thing.
Well, we meet again next Tuesday, so.
Yeah, I think next Tuesday we will have a better idea. It gives us a week to know whether or not there's any more new cases or whether there's some recovery involved. So I think that's a good thing.
So we'll discourage you use of the tennis courts for now. Again, I don't know how you please that. I'm not gonna go kick people off of ball diamonds. But I think the town position needs, needs to be, we just discourage that for now. And Madam Mayor, are you back?
Yeah, well, I, I believe it's a wider approach. At this time, we're not ready to open those to the public. The public user that they're on risk.
Okay. Anything else on, uh, Mayor?
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah. If, if the mayor can do a, um, another message, just to remind the people that, you know, we would, we'd really like to get them out there using the facilities, but we, we're, we're, we're behind the, we're behind the rest of the province and we have to be very careful. It's not gonna hurt us to wait to make that decision. I think that we let them know. There's gonna be people upset. Too bad. That's the way it is. And, uh, that's, that's my thoughts.
Again, I must assure we haven't had any movement the last three days. Maybe, maybe we've seen where we're gonna get. I, I hope that's all we're gonna see. And again, if we wait another week, we got a little more chance to read what's going on in this area. It starts to spread, then we can take more measures. Anything else?
Jeff wanted to say some.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Back to summer events. Do you want to pick a date, for example? I, I don't see party in the park happening realistically, by the way. But you would want to do something formal on that, but also do you want to pick a date for the Heritage Week event? Because we're gonna start getting inquiries if they should be prepared for or not, or planned for.
But, but Jeff, how, how do we deal with the fact that at this point you cannot have any large event?
Yeah.
Fifteen people is not at five zero yet. So those type of event brings seven, eight, nine hundred people, maybe a thousand. And how can you ever think that they're going to let us have a thousand people by August? I don't.
So our position is potentially we allow whatever the province will allow?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else on this discussion?
Oh, garage sales. Do you have a blanket position? I know Counsel Courts, is there any other formal position on that?
I'm gonna have one next week. No.
So many people use buy and sell now anyhow, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's a good idea.
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
Long wanted garage sale.
Looks like the thumbs down.
See in my box, build such diamonds, the province says do it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, seven B, Mr. Casarella. Here, you want to discuss and talk about this letter a little bit?
That was a funny one.
So a community that shall remain nameless or opportunity to scoop some money from the feds or whatever to fund their summer employment programs for their students. And a conversation that Jeff and I had, well, most communities are paying for their own summer student employees. There is no program. Um, I mean, I guess we could throw a letter and say, hey, you know, if you throw money away for no good reason, then yeah, we'll take some and it'll help fund our golf course. But to me, I just think, uh, we don't just leave it alone unless you really, really want to send a letter for some reason.
My answer is no.
There we go. Yeah, that was good.
Okay, thumbs up, thumbs down.
All right. Okay, project schedule. There's that big sheet, isn't it, Jeff, that you put in there?
Correct, yeah. Oh, I muted. I'm not.
And this one here?
Yeah, that's right.
One, Counselor.
What they're planning on doing for the summer.
This is incredibly colorful, I might add.
I like it.
We do what we can, guys.
The correspondence, is there any discussion on MSA, MSI funding and ministerial orders from AC Medu? Pretty straightforward, yes.
Jeff, uh, as we were talking about this letter, do you have a little bit more information regarding their MSI operational? Does it intend to mean that the MSI operational is there to fund whatever you want this year?
Yeah, it seems as though they're gonna relax the conditions around what it can be spent on. My guess is this is an effort to help municipalities pay debt. That's my guess.
Yeah, so no good to us.
It up at all on the Rex's facility then? I heard that. I was just kidding, okay?
You only have about $200,000 of MSI operating, so.
And
Phone calls tonight.
A following question to that is regarding the MSI capital. What they were trying to say that they were going to use a channel of the MSI, um, channeling of money to municipalities. But what I'm interested in is they're saying that we'll approve or let the communities know one week at a time. It's a little bit the way it's going regarding the project shovel ready. Jeff, do you know?
So with the shovel ready programs, municipal affairs has simply gathered an inventory of potential projects with a value, and we know nothing more to that point.
Okay, so.
And we have submitted projects, by the way, so we just don't know what they're doing with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh.
Counsel Selk, Counsel Court.
Counsel Selk, sorry, you're hiding in your garage. I just can't see you there.
Yeah. So I noticed that the letter from Barry Morris, she is suggesting they use the MSI funding for this shovel ready project. And, uh, the minister hasn't made a comment or commitment on that. On the one hand, I see what he's saying that, yeah, okay, everybody would get what they would normally get because it's formula based. The problem I have with that is that there are municipalities in this province that get an inordinate amount of money that they don't need. Let's talk about the municipal district of Wood Buffalo, who has a $752 million budget and gets $16 million in MSI funding that I'm sure they buy poker chips with or something because they don't need it.
Well, they might this year because it got flooded.
Yeah, they can pull from their almost billion dollar reserves, probably.
Pretty sure they have.
They're looking for, for help from the government.
Yeah.
It, but Counsel Selk, you're exactly right. So here, there's a pro and a con of using the MSI formula to distribute, um, what's the word here? Uh, stimulus funding. So on the one hand, you don't have to compete for it, but on the other hand, you may not get enough to do anything meaningful.
Right.
That's the tricky part.
Yeah, like it will be broad based as opposed to looking at the projects that would genuinely benefit communities.
Yep.
Now, conversation with Jeff earlier, I mean, we've got some shovel ready projects that we submitted where, you know, our sewer outfall line and the twinning of the, uh,
Yeah, the sewer line there, yeah.
Some other things. Those are meaningful projects to our community that we've had on the books for a while. So I'm a little conflicted over that.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Well, comment.
Yep.
So in one of the letters, it says if we're not using our MSI this year, then they'll, they will send it to us. If if we're telling them we've got projects and they're saying they don't qualify, then are they saying, well, we're gonna control what is good and what? I mean, those are shovel ready projects that we, like you said, Counsel Selk, that we've had on the book for some time. We want to get them done. So we certainly don't want them to say, well, you know, you guys don't have any projects qualified, so you're not getting your money, right? I'm scared of those kind of judgment calls by the government.
No, I think for this year, Counsel, that the MSI is up to us. If I read their letter, correct me, that they're not really gonna, the, the, the actual money they're sending us for MSI, I don't know about all the other funding for sporty stuff. Maybe I read it wrong. I is basically up to what we're gonna use it for. Is that not correct, Jeff?
I think what Counsel Barnes, what you might be referring to is I believe there was a, in one of those letters, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to scroll them quickly.
MSI capital.
Yeah, there was a discussion that if you had a whole bunch of unallocated MSI that you may not be able to, um, that it may give you some eligibility issues on future funding. Um, we're not in that position of having a whole ton of unused MSI.
Yeah. It just says here if a municipality doesn't intend to spend their payment this year or does not respond to the email, the payment will be withheld until February 2021. So we make sure that we respond.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's enough stuff to spend our money on.
Bottom of that page one.
Okay, uh, the Minister of Community and Social Services, FCSS, funding, any questions on that? And kind of same lines. That it, and there's something about food or something in there. Is that correct that we could use that?
It's an interesting, uh, way for the government to help communities who have, uh, families that are poor or who need support with food. So in our town, for example, there has been, uh, redeployment of, uh, funds and uh, Epic is now doing hampers for people in the communities that are in need. Uh, Counselor Brown, maybe you can add something to that. I think that's correct, what I just said.
So I haven't heard hampers, but I have heard that they are helping them. There have a lot of families that have signed up for help and that they are doing their best to get them whatever's needed. So they sent out um, messages to a bunch of people, you know, shampoo, food, whatever it was. So Mayor, you could be right. I, I just haven't heard the word hampers. But what I find interesting is with, I sit on the FCSS board and uptown now, we have not been able to give money for any sort of food, as Counsel Banger knows, for any program. That's never been allowed. So it's interesting that they've, and in a time when at the last FCSS convention we went to, I mean, the government was talking about all the reining back of all the money and now, you know, bibbidi bobbidi boo, we have money.
Yeah.
To hand out for food. It's a huge blessing to our, our community, but they have to apply for it. Like, it's not just being handed out. You have to apply.
Comment. So have we applied for it?
Who?
FCSS, Braxtra. Any of that stuff?
So sorry, when I say that, what I mean is FCSS will be given the money, but say you, Tim.
Oh, I see.
You yourself would have to apply with, through FCSS for us to get funding to help you, is my understanding.
So Epic would have to apply if they wanted.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Counsel Barnes.
Yeah, we we were talking at our meeting the other day about the sandwich program. Now, it's really difficult to now get together as a group to make those sandwiches. And I believe you know, we get how many groups?
He's just cutting in and out.
Assign them to make so many sandwiches. So that program doesn't, uh, doesn't shut down because there's still a big need, right? Am I?
Yeah.
Can, can I maybe?
Is that, is that what we talked about?
No.
Mars, you already cut about half of that because you're struggling with your computer a little bit. Madam Mayor.
Counsel, Counselor, uh, Barnes, what you're trying to, uh, talk about is two different things altogether. The FCSS funding is one specific type of funding for relief of, uh, uh, problems in your community. The other one is privately, um, kind of opportunity to do something good in a community and that, uh, um, Carrie Roberts that is in charge of it now. Yes, we were discussing at our meeting, how can we do, do something better regarding the making of those sandwiches for the shelter? Because at this point, she cannot put all those volunteer togethers. So what's happening right now, Jeff is going to be in contact with Carrie Roberts to try to pass along a thought uh, that we had. We need to use proper kitchens. There have to be industrial kitchens approved by the government to do that. But it could well be thought that a family could come at the senior center, at, uh, the town hall, or possibly the legion, if the legion, uh, uh, wants to work with us. Those who have kitchens that are industrial kitchen.
Like the high school.
The high school could be another place where different family could make them and then have them ready on, on those pallets and the pallet could be, could be, uh, picked up and distributed. So that is something that, uh, Jeff is going to contact Carrie Roberts with. And we shall know later on if it works or not.
Okay. Okay, the, uh, Mr. Dan Rudy, oh, man, the C E R B and elected officials, apparently you can get some kind of money if you criteria. I don't know if any of us fit that criteria or not. I would, I think you can't make more than a thousand dollars a month or something like that. And so you can read that and decide what you want to do on that one. The Alberta government relaunch, it's all out there and what they're planning on doing and when all depends on what this virus and its weight, direction it heads. If we can get it more under control. Uh, anything else on the correspondence? If there's not, I'll, I'll accept the motion.
Forward to go in close. Forward to go in closed session.
All in favor?
Alright.
We are in closed session and so he's filming this right now, Corey, and we're going into court closed session.
Yeah, we'll give Corey just a minute here.